Are we live? Thank you. Okay. Kalina Graham, would you, today is the 6th of March, it's at 6:32. And Kalina Graham, would you take the roll call, please?
David Broughton.
Yeah.
Mike Delavickia.
Yeah.
David Valance.
Yeah.
Dale Denial.
Here.
Edwin Bonus.
Here.
And Boing Contardo.
Here. And what Claire Graham is ours, planner and assistant planner, Dean Tefrin and Brandy Luffin. So they will be with us also this evening. We have, at this time, we have, we had a passing of Jay Tibbin and everybody where he passed on. And so I'd like to thank him for his service on the board. He's been with us for many years and I know he's serving the board, but he served on countless improvements and he has, he did a stintch with the zoning, I believe. Yeah, so he was, he gave it, gave it back to the city, you know, he wasn't a taker. He helped contribute to the city, so I'd like to thank him for his service with us and we'll miss him. Share your thoughts.
Thank you for acknowledging him.
We have, we have a full board here right now, so we have no alternates, alternates to appoint, but if there's anybody who wants to serve on the planning board, please put their request in and Dean will show you how the, what you've got to do to get on the board and that'll be good too. I don't see any change to the agenda, so we'll move forward with this agenda. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes of the February 15th?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from February 15th.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. We have extensions on, Irwin Marine has an extension for the road, I believe, and they want to, they have a completion date on as May 1st of next year, and...
Okay. Is there any way?
And I guess they're pretty much in their project and we share that project with Gilford, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, yep.
So...
There's holding the storage area in Gilford and then there's a road and some associated drainage in our jurisdiction.
That's correct. Okay, do we have a motion to give them that extension?
I make a motion.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, okay, we also have an extension for Watermark.
Waterfront Marine Holdings.
Yeah, Watermark.
It's Waterfront, they call Waterfront Marine. And this is a two-part extension, it's, I believe it's a two-part extension. One is for the completion of a 30 by 60 building and another is to finalize their landscaping. And the finalization of the landscaping is planned by them for 2018. Any comments on this extension?
So you're saying it's two parts, it's basically two votes?
They're rolling, well, we could, no, I don't think we need two votes, I think we could do this with the qualify, what we're voting on. I think I know where you're coming from, I think we just have to say that we'll give the extension on the landscaping and the rest of it will have to be reapplied for.
Right.
Anybody here to speak on this thing? Feel free to come on up.
My name's Paul Goodwin, I own Waterfront Marine, which is, Watermark is a tenant. So we, the landscaping that we're talking about completion of is just right along the water where there's a new wall, sort of on the water side of the parking lot if you're familiar with, everybody still calls it Burger King, so let's just face it, we're going to call it that, talking about it. So there's some, there's just a few trees and planting along there, the rest of, all the roadside stuff is already done, if anybody's gone by you can see that that's all done in the summer. And the second part of the request was, we have a 30 by 60, two-story storage and shop building approved on the south end of the property, right up against the property line. I have a plan here if anybody wants to see it, but it's the same, same building we've had, this is the building itself. And we're just looking for an extension on that primarily because the property values are so bad in commercial real estate right now. This building is about a $400,000 building, our property values have gone down $400,000 in the last four years. So we're looking for an extension to do that later and obviously the landscaping would be finished immediately.
In 2018, you said?
Yes, yeah, yep.
As my understanding that you have some invasive species in that area?
We have, on the south end of the property, there's some bittersweet.
Yeah.
And it's actually killed a couple of those big, beautiful locust trees that were there. And it's pretty tough stuff, we had some students come in through some sort of cooperative program with DES to remove it and they were there about two hours and left and didn't do anything. So it's, it's pretty intense vine if anybody's familiar with it. We've been working on it, but it grows like you wouldn't believe, so...
Yeah, I would.
Getting there.
I was wondering if that's what you're trying to pull up, to try to get it away from the area?
No, the planting, that end of the property was part of our, what's called under the shoreline program, unaltered area.
Okay.
So you are allowed to remove invasives without a permit, but the, there's no landscaping going on at that end of the property, that would be the south end by the launch ramp, on the south side of the launch ramp. So the bittersweet we've been removing is really just by that one lone locust tree that's more toward the north side of the launch ramp and that's the area, from that tree over to the building is what's going to be planted.
Thank you.
Literally right in front of the parking lot if you...
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Could you just bring me, I'm new on the board, could you just bring me up to speed on the purpose of the building that you want an extension on, what was it going to be?
There was going to be shop on the first floor, it was a two-story building. I'm welcome to look at this if I have a place. The bottom floor was a workshop and storage area and the top floor was both storage.
And this, this is to complement the business that's already there?
Yes.
Well, it's planned to be that way, it doesn't do that right now.
You don't, you don't have a timeframe for when you want to complete that?
I don't, I've asked for a one-year extension, so...
That's it?
Yes.
It does if the economics, the economy changes, I guess.
Right now, do you anticipate that you'll complete that in one year?
I would, I don't know is the honest answer, but I would like to be able to if the, if the situation changes, I'd like to be able to do that without starting over. The approval's based on that surface area, I'm sorry, square footage, based on parking, the drainage calculations, all that stuff is approved based on that building being in that spot.
I would not see any problem with the board approving you later on with that if you had to come in, if you didn't get that part as your extension.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would think nothing's really going to change per se, but I think the board is taking positions, or starting to take positions that were, were just, we've been willing to allow these extensions for a while, year after year, and the economy has changed for many people, so, and that umbrella, I think we're going to start not allowing all these extensions.
Is there a reason for that? Was there a reason for that? And we went through a lot of engineering, we paid a second engineer who made a mistake.
The reason, the reason that we don't allow the extensions is if things change, especially in your situation along the water, things can have an impact or change along the water, so that's really the basic. If it was inland a little bit, probably not as much.
Steph is, Steph is pretty supportive of this extension though, they've been, they've kept a good site, it was approved, you know, only six years ago and we have given extensions beyond that, so...
Six years ago, okay. So I think it's, I think it's been a while, okay, six years and anything can happen six years.
We have given extensions in much longer term than that, I mean, we're not...
I just said that, I just said that. And in fact, we have given extensions, but in the past, but I think that's going to start, we're going to start re-looking at them as they come in and maybe not afford them the opportunity to. You're close, but not close enough, and my recommendation would be approved your, the extension of the landscaping and all that, which should be done, but it isn't, and then, then come back in for the 30 by 60 building. And you might not even want to do it at that point in time, I don't know.
That's pretty disappointing, to be honest with you, because we spent a lot of money to get it approved.
I don't...
It's not our fault that the, you know, the commercial property in La Conia is going downhill.
They would have to re-engineer everything, pay all the application fees.
No changes in the shoreline.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do, I don't see any reason, at this point in time, why we can't approve both extensions for a year. Let the applicant work at what he can do with, and we'll hear back from him in a year's time as to how the process is going. To start all over again doesn't make any sense to me. So I move that we approve both extensions.
I mean, before that's, oh, that's for motion in a minute. Are you fine with that?
Yeah.
In other words...
Of course.
Completing that within the year expansion?
Yes, of course.
You are fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now you may make a motion, good.
I move to approve both extensions.
Okay, for just a year. Dave, you have anything to say on that?
No, the only thing, she was saying that they've been very cooperative and they've done everything too diligent. I would only say that I would, I would second the motion on a slight contingency, I don't know if we can do that or not, that you are going to do the landscaping this summer and then that'll be completed and that'll make your extension correct.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Do you have a problem with that?
Not at all.
Okay.
So you want to modify your motion, counsel?
No, because I think that the application says...
Did you hear what David just said? He said, you're going to do the landscaping this summer and then rather than do everything till 2019, that will be done and then the extension for the building can go through for one year?
I'm happy to take an amendment like that, but it's not necessary.
It is necessary.
No, it's not. Their application says that the final landscaping is to complete, to be completed during the spring of 2018. And that's the application and that's the request for extension that I'm moving on. If you think that more language is needed, I haven't got a dog in that fight, Bill, so...
All right, me either. But David, your input on that is that you would like to see the landscaping done this...
Well, it's, it's like, like David said, it is, it is typed in in black and white, I just want to make sure that he understands that.
But that's what we're saying, and that's what you said and I agree with that, that's what, that clarifies it, makes it more understandable.
Right.
Okay, so we want to modify the motion here, counsel?
No, I'm fine with my motion.
Okay, anybody want to, any other suggestions on that?
I'm willing to go ahead with the extension mostly because you haven't come to us six or seven times for an extension. And I think that's what the chairman was referring to, is that we have extended too many times in the past and we're going to be looking very, very closely. I don't think you fit into that category at all. So I would like to second the motion.
Okay, let's take a vote on that. All in favor? All right, okay, you're all set?
Thank you.
They're requesting an extension and...
We grant it, we're done.
I'm sorry.
It's done.
And that is for May 1st of 2019. And I think they're making a lot of progress in what they're doing right now, but they're looking for wetland permits right now?
This is, this is our one...
We've already done that one.
You already did that one, we're on to continue with the hearings.
The first one we did, Bill.
Yep, you're all set.
Now we're on to Pogus.
Pogus Woods, continued with public hearing, I think.
Okay, Pogus Woods. And what I'll do is I'll turn the meeting over to...
Hello, everybody, Ed Bonus here. So we're now going to hear a public hearing for Pogus Woods, excuse me, what, oh, okay, for Pogus Woods. Yes, sir?
Tom Miller, I live at 27 Ciesto Lane, La Conia. Can I ask the reason that he's recusing himself from the meeting?
Who?
The man who just left?
The chairman?
Chairman?
Yeah.
You could ask him, I don't have an answer for you.
The chairman has, the chairman has determined that he has a conflict of interest with the, with the, with the application, so he'll be recusing it.
Oh, Jesus, Bill, don't make it worse.
Why? We thought it would be best for the city because of a legal suit that was going to be applied to the city, that I recuse myself because they found this was prejudicial to their cause.
Point of order?
Seek its full beauty.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. At this point in time, I think the chairman has recused himself and he shouldn't be giving input.
Yeah, I agree with you, there'd be no further discussion, that's something that could be taken up after or before. I, you know, I am going to ask the, the audience to please direct any comments and questions they have to the board and to not discuss, you know, we're here to discuss tonight's requests, not last week's, the week before that or the week before that. So I'm looking for input and feedback on what is being presented this evening. And I'd also ask, you know, keep the chatter and, you know, we've had plenty of meetings where, you know, there's people in the audience just going on about whatever. We're trying to get through these meetings and address them properly the best we can, so please work with us. So at this point, you know, I'd ask that, you know, representatives of Pogus Woods come up and present their requests.
Sorry, can you just officially open the public hearing?
And I'll open it up to, not public hearing, is it public?
Yes.
I open it up to public hearing at 6:49.
Thank you.
Please state your name clearly.
Good evening, John Rokee with Rokee Consulting here on behalf of 553 Weers Boulevard LLC for the Langley Cove application and also the Pogus Woods amendment and the Langley Cove lot line adjustment. We're here this evening to basically give an update of where things are at. As you remember, last week, there were a couple, there were a couple of things on the list that we needed to get taken care of. I worked with DPW and got one thing completely knocked off. We have stuff turned, we have condominium documents turned back into the, into the planning department. Dean was working through a couple of comments to give back to us to make some final revisions on that. And we've also turned in what we, what we're hoping is final revisions on water and Rod Dyer is reviewing those documents right now for the water department. So of the three things, there's two things left and we've turned things in and it's basically just waiting for, waiting for input back to finalize those two items.
So we're looking for feedback from the unit?
Yes, yep. If the applicant is done with their presentation, you can ask for a public comment.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's basically, that's basically all, all this happened, we went through.
And what were the items you were asked to address?
We were, we were asked to work with DPW and figure out the exact timing of when we would need a turn lane on Weers Boulevard and, like, what, what phase of the development would trigger when the turn lane needed to be installed?
Okay.
And the reason for that was the, the bridge condition under Weers Boulevard. As soon as it gets widened, basically the whole box culvert or, or bridge of under, for Langley Brook needs to be replaced.
Okay.
So we just needed to work out the timing of that. So I, I got that all straightened away with Krista at DPW.
Okay.
And then we were asked to work on the condominium documents for Langley Cove to make sure that the open space, everything we've talked about with planning and conservation commission is all straightened away. And we had turned in our version of what we wanted and we've been working with Dean on it just to kind of take some of the legalese out of it or make sure it was explained a little bit better so it didn't look quite, quite so technical. And Dean was going to give us a couple of comments back on that. And then Water Works, it's basically just finalizing the contracts, it's, it's extensive contracts with the water, with the water department because of the booster pump stations and the replacement of water line that we're doing and everything else, so we've been working with Seth on that and I, Brandy and I just talked to him, was it Wednesday last week? And he's feeling, he's definitely feeling like we're almost to the end, but Rod Dyer's reviewing the stuff for them right now, so that's, that's what's been going on.
Is Rod reviewing it for the city?
Yes.
For the water department?
For the water department. That's correct.
Is that all you've got for us? All right, we'll open it up to the public, any public comment, please come forward, please clearly state your name.
Tom Miller, 27 Ciesto Lane, La Conia. I have a question on Langley Cove, is that going to be private or is that going to be open from the town? Are going to be town roads maintained or is that going to be private maintained?
They're proposed to be private roots.
Private.
What is that?
They're proposed to be private.
Okay. And I had talked to the fire chief about a year and a half ago about the access road that was supposed to go in and he told me that that was only supposed to be for emergency vehicles and in case of an emergency for people to get out in cases of fire or, or some type of emergency. It's not supposed to be an open access for the, for their development, our development to go through uninterrupted. And he said if it becomes too much, they would put a gate to stop that.
Okay.
And now they want to make this, you know, our roads are deplorable.
Well, we're talking about the access road, correct?
Right, yes.
And I don't believe the access road is the access to Langley Cove, is it?
You said you talked with the fire chief a year and a half ago?
Yeah, about that.
All right, so a year and a half ago, we did not have an application before us...
Yeah, but it was brought up.
That detailed any of the, of the points that we've been discussing.
No, I understand that, but it was brought up.
So I would say that since you talked with the fire chief and since we got the application, things have changed.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's as simple as that.
Right. Well, when the development was built in my development, which is Pogus Woods, that lot right next to that access road was supposed to be a lot for a house.
Yep.
Okay, but now supposedly that's taken away. They've changed that, they made an amendment to that.
The proposal before us tonight, one of the proposals before us tonight is to amend the subdivision approval that was done eight or nine years ago to change one of the lots to now be the access point to the adjacent lot, yes.
Right. But is that supposed to be free and clear between both developments?
I, I don't understand the question.
Well, in other words, they're supposed to be able to come in through us and we're supposed to be able to go out through them and...
That is the proposal, yes.
Well, why didn't they make it through Evergreen? They have that situation over there where they could have gone out through them and would have created that. Because our roads are deplorable.
That's not what they requested, though, unfortunately.
It's not what they requ...
Our roads are, I understand what they're asking. They're a company that pays $19 million cash for a building in Manchester, they're not a good neighbor, they have complaints against them in every job they've ever done. They're terrible.
And you know what, and I would say to you, sir, I, I don't know the answer to that. Unfortunately, that's not what they're here for.
No, that's what I'm here for because it's my, my house.
They're here applying, I realize what you're saying, but they're here applying to do something with some property they own, what they're doing in Manchester has really nothing to do with us here in La Conia.
It has nothing to do with that, I'm talking about their, their record.
And I understand that. And again, we can't control what their record is.
I understand that.
All we're here to do is hear what their proposal is and see if it fits into what we want to do here in La Conia.
Yeah.
You know, I, I get it, I get it, I'm listening. At every meeting I've been at, that you folks from Pogus Woods have been complaining about their character and their lack of being a good neighbor, I get that, I hear that, I've repeatedly said during these hearings that I expect the applicant to address that in a meaningful way. And I, I don't mean to cut you off, I want to listen to you, but what you're saying has been said many times and I've been listening.
Man, I think it has to be, keep me said, because it's important that you know how we're being dealt with.
Good.
And the concerns that we have.
Okay, I hear you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Paul Leighton, 537 Weers Boulevard. I come up every time, there's nothing new I can tell you, but I just want to explain my frustration with the rest of us out here, that we really don't think this process is going the way it probably should be going. We, I don't think there's a whole lot of trust in what's going on here with people recusing themselves and people's, you know, don't talk about that, don't bring that up, it's a concern for these folks. They have every right to come in here and voice their concerns to you people, whether you want to listen to it or not or affects your decision or not, that's up to you, but we have every right to come in and say what bothers us.
Absolutely.
So you shouldn't talk them down the way you did.
Unfortunately, I'll talk you... That's all I have to say.
Let me talk you down too. I have heard this over and over again, and again, if you don't trust in the process, feel free to volunteer up here with the rest of us that you don't trust to make these decisions, but you haven't even given us the opportunity to make a decision. We're just listening like the rest of you are listening.
It doesn't sound like you want to listen.
Take that into account.
No, it doesn't sound like you want to listen anymore, sir.
No, what I don't want to hear is the same thing month after month after month. The paper is green, I know it's green, you've told me it's green 15 times, I got that. Now let's hear what's going on. Let us evaluate what is being proposed and make a decision, but feel free, like I said, to volunteer your time and sit on this board with us to not be trusted, because that's really what you just said.
Obviously, the paper you're seeing isn't green, sir. What they were saying is, you're going to allow a company that has a poor record to come in and do it again to more La Conia residents, that's what they're saying, that you're not picking up.
I think we've already picked that up. And if any, nobody, anybody else have anything they'd like to speak on? If not, it's 6:58, I'm going to close the public hearing.
So staff has prepared you a memo that you have in your package, it's a one-page memo dated February 26th, and I want to draw your attention to the list of the five items about two-thirds of the way down. Those are the five, eventually, those are the five items that you will be voting on for the two, two separate applications. So the first one concerns the Pogus Woods subdivision amendment. Essentially, what you would be approving, when you get to that point, we're not doing it tonight, obviously, but when you get to that point, essentially what you would be approving is the, is the amendment to the site plan that would change the secondary access road from the original one proposed to the one that's now proposed. Along with that comes a couple of other items that staff will take care of, including the approval of the, or review, not approval, review of the homeowners association documents that at this point in time the developer still controls. So that would be the first item that you would, you would have to approve and obviously without that approval...
Everything else goes back.
Everything is, is a, is a problem and I'm not making that decision for you. The other four items are, are concerned Langley Cove, the actual subdivision, they have a wetland buffer CUP, they have a steep slope CUP, and they have a boundary line adjustment. And when we get to that point, you'll be voting on those four separate items as well.
Just one quick question.
Sure.
The, the Pogus Woods subdivision amendment, that is, that is, also includes that, what that gentleman said, that the lot is being changed from a lot to a road.
Correct, that is, that is, that is the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, that is the amendment, takes that lot that was going to be, that is a lot of record right now, that was going to be an individual unit. It takes that lot from being a lot and makes it an access point to the adjacent land, which is the Langley Cove project. And we are continuing to work with the applicant concerning the items that the board expressed at the last couple of meetings concerning quality of, or condition, I should say, condition of the roads in, in Pogus Woods, the drainage issues, and we are continuing to work with the applicant to nail those items down to try to get as much relief as possible as part of this plan.
Could you just, one interject, and I'd like to know from my own knowledge, where that lot is and that road that's going in? Are there two houses on either side of that road now?
Yes.
So there's two houses?
It's a, it's a, it's a row of lots on Ciesto Lane, it's the lot that is directly across from Palmetto.
Yeah, so there are houses there now.
Palmetto would just basically go straight across, right. Right.
Just one side.
Oh, just one side?
As of right now, there's lots on both sides, but there's only a house on one side.
So one of them doesn't have a building on it yet?
That's correct.
But it is a buildable lot?
Yes.
You did receive a site plan that shows this change in the packet. I know it's a big packet, but it's in there.
Okay.
Now, because it's a lot, it's a little bit wider than what would normally be a right-of-way. So there's going to be a little bit of extra land on either side of that right-of-way that would be a little bit of a buffer or however you want to look at it.
Bigger buffer than it normally would be on each side of the road.
Correct.
Well, I'm just going to reiterate some of the concerns that you've already taken into account. One, when they actually, if they get approval, assuming they get approval, and I'm not saying they're going to get approval, listen to me when I say that, that there be some provisions about improving the roads or making changes to the roads, not only to the ones that are directly affected, but that may be affected as a result of this. Some of the driveways have driven up there, the road that you come in on, there's a slope into a home from that access road. So I just want to make sure they address that. I say to the applicant again, I understand that there is bankard between everybody, I get it. I don't expect anybody to solve that, or I don't expect that I will change anybody's minds. But I want to know what the applicant can do, whether they like it or not, or say, "Good job," or can keep complaining. What you can do to improve the conditions of the roads in Pogus Woods to address some of the concerns that you've heard. Now, for what is this, the third, the fourth, I can't even count anymore. So that's my thoughts.
We'll certainly make sure that that's in the staff review.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Please.
I cannot sleep at night if I would approve this access through Pogus Woods. These people have been here five months in a row. I would not want a 291-unit condo development behind my house cutting through my neighborhood. There's other options. You can have another road without going through Pogus Woods. It might be more money, it might be tougher to do whatever has to be done. You need to do that because I'm going to urge all my fellow board members not to approve that access road. There's other options. You cannot just negate these people's lives. Their homes are their lives. And you can't just say, "Well, we're going to put 300 units in your backyard and they're going to drive through your neighborhood." It can't happen. I will never approve it, I would never sleep at night if I did. I'm going to urge all my fellow board members to disapprove that application.
Yep.
I would like to see the owner fix the roads and the drainage in Pogus Woods. As far as the access road goes, I would put something in the homeowner's documents so that the maintenance of that would be fair to Pogus Woods and Langley Cove.
That's already part of it.
My concern, again, is to fix what's broken, to fix the roads. If you're going to be moving equipment and moving land, then this could be done. And I think what you probably need is to get an engineer, whether it be DPW, Wes, or Krista, to find out what you need for drainage up there, to get it to drain right and drain correctly. It's probably the sloping of the roads, but to fix that so that their concerns will not be the concerns of anybody in Langley Cove. That's what I'd like to see happen very early on before I decide whether I want to approve an access road or not.
All right. So I think we're going to close comments to the board.
Take two votes, one to...
Excuse me?
You take two votes, one for each application.
Okay. So we need... So we're voting, first vote was on what date?
Pogus Woods.
Okay.
To continue, continue to...
Continuation?
We're just moving to continue with that.
Correct, that's all we're going to do.
To continue after April.
Is that going to get a motion to continue?
So moved.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
And I'll second it.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And then we need a motion to continue Langley Cove also.
I make a motion to continue.
People are going to do a separate public hearing for that, don't we?
Oh.
No?
Should open it.
Okay. So I'm going to open up Langley Cove to a public hearing. You have anything else you want to add, John?
All the same.
All right. Anybody in the public like to speak on Langley, please come on up. Please state your name for us.
Alina Olet. I live at 62 Sarasota Lane in Pogus Woods. I'm not a speaker, I don't pretend to be. We've been living there eight years next week, and we're both retired, we're there full-time. And the roads are deplorable, just such a mess. And I can't see where, if there's traffic coming both ways, the two cars will be able to go side by side in the roads because the roads are that narrow, especially in the wintertime. So that's another concern. The hill going down Sarasota, which I live on, is a major concern. I've gotten stuck on that hill myself, and I had four-wheel drive. It's just the drainage and everything, I mean, we see it every single storm, we see it every time there's any weather change. There's no good drainage, whether it's on Sarasota Road, Palmetto, Siesta, the drainage is deplorable. You could just ride through there and see the front yards of all the homes that are wrecked because of drainage. I can't see how anybody can vote in a good sense of doing what they plan on doing. Pogus Woods was supposed to have a third extension of homes and so forth, and that's never going to happen. We were supposed to have a clubhouse when that happened. That's never going to happen. We've been promised and promised and promised. We've had so many construction problems with our home itself, not to mention anybody else, that we've taken care of since we moved in there. And it's cost thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars because of Brady Sullivan's workmanship. So I'm begging you and begging you, please do not involve Pogus Woods with this new development because it's going to be unbelievable. It's going to be a mess. And I don't think most of our people that live in Pogus Woods, there's a number of them that are in Florida for the winter that will come back in the spring, of course, and all retired. And we don't deserve this, we really don't. All our money's tied up in our property, and that's all we have. And Brady Sullivan doesn't care about us at all. He just cares about Brady Sullivan. So thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? I'm going to go ahead and close it at 7:12 to public hearing. Open it up to the board, if the board has anything else they'd like to add on Langley, please feel free. If not, I'm going to close it to board at 7:12, anything you can tell? So we need a motion to...
So move, I move to continue it to the next regular scheduled meeting in April.
Get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? So move?
That meeting will be April 3rd, just so everyone's aware.
Perfect, thank you. And we're going to turn it back over to Bill Cantaro.
Thank you for, well done. I just want to clarify something so people understand why I recruised myself. And it wasn't because I have a conflict of interest, because I really don't. I recruised myself because Brady Sullivan's lawyer put a suit on the city. And he thought that he was not going to get his fair hearing or understanding at this board while I chaired the board. Now, we could have fought that and went forward with it, but we don't want to incur the legal fees. So based on that, I decided that I would recruise myself for that reason. I have no conflict of interest, never had a conflict of interest, I want to be clear on that. So the residents in the city understands I have no conflict with this place. Except that I asked questions and I wanted answers. And I wasn't getting the answers. So I think everybody's doing the right thing by letting them hear what you don't like. Okay, so I just want to be clear when Dean said I had a conflict of interest, I want to be clear that there wasn't a conflict of interest on my behalf. So we're clear on that. I sent a letter, they sent a letter to me, I sent a letter back saying that I recruised myself in the advent of preventing any legal costs that the city might have working on that suit. Because I could have not recruised and there would be a legal suit right now. And they didn't want to spend the money. So let's be clear on that, I have no conflict of interest, never had a conflict of interest. My interest is with the city, my interest is for the right of the people. That's my, and the applicant, their legal right. That's my only interest that I have in all of this. So again, no conflict of interest on my behalf. I got no skin in the game with any of these people, so you know. So I just want to make that clear so everybody, I know people in Pogus Woods were sort of concerned about that, why we're recruiting, why we're doing this and that, because it's a matter of dollars and it's a matter of Brady Sullivan suing the city or his lawyers suing the city, that's what it boiled down to.
Let's move forward.
So let's move forward. Thank you. By what are your names? Matt.
All right, master plan's next?
No.
No, what do we got next?
Yeah?
Yeah, there's master plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought the union was...
Correct?
Sorry, I was mistaken.
Am I correct?
You are, continue.
Round to the master plan.
Thank you very much. I guess we're going on to the master plan, public hearing. The staff will give an overview of the master plan, and then we'll open it for public input.
So I gave a presentation to the board last month about the master plan. It has, the text and the draft has been on the city website for about six weeks now. We have received a few comments, the master plan steering committee did meet one more time and went through the document. We have a few punctuation and a couple of minor phrasing changes on a couple of things. Nothing that changes the content from a standpoint of what is being proposed. I will try to get those updates incorporated into the document and up on the website and also out to you folks after tonight's meeting. The textual changes are very, very extremely minor in nature. Like the minorist of the minor, let's put it that way, that you could have. So the idea would be for us to have the public hearing tonight and then I think wait till the April meeting to vote to approve or not approve of the vision statement in the land use chapter. I mean, you could do it tonight if you want to, but I think it'd be better to wait for the updated document that has all of the bells and whistles in it.
And what would be the difference, so everybody knows, rather than having to reread everything over and over?
Yeah, to give it opportunity for people to review one more time.
Right, but should you just nudge it forward what the minor changes were, so that, I think people have read this before and they can just pick up on it?
Yeah.
Do you remember what they were? Okay. Maybe you can, I mean...
I'm not sure I have a mark to, I don't believe I have a mark to.
I got, my only comment is that we had a special meeting of the committee. You were there.
I chaired it, I chaired it, so everybody knows, I chaired the master planning committee, which includes...
I don't think we really had a chair, but we...
You didn't even realize you had a chair.
We didn't.
But the point is that...
Didn't have a chair.
The point is, okay, we worked through this process, okay, and we came up with this outcome, and it does...
Can I finish?
We were talking about being a chair and all that.
No, I was bringing up something about, at the meeting, you said you were a chair, but that's not my, well, my point was. And I'd like to finish my point.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. On page 16, it talks about RSA 79E. And I just want, just for the purposes of this public hearing, for the public to understand that in fact, the city council has adopted that particular statute, made it part of our ordinances, applied it to commercial property for a five-year period, I think...
Watch, explain that so everybody, so everyone knows what you're talking about.
Up to 50%. And I just think that that's, it's, I guess I'll acknowledge that...
Would you explain all that, counsel?
No, I'm not done, I'm not done. I guess I'll acknowledge that that's a minor change, but I just wanted, for purposes of this public hearing, that people understand that the city council has adopted that particular recommendation because it's, as it stands in this document...
So the question becomes, what is that adopted recommendation?
It urges the council to consider adopting it. So, there, now I'm done, Bill.
Now would you explain what you adopted?
79E, we adopted incentives for people developing in commercial property for a period of up to five years. 50% of the value of their improvement will be available as a tax deduction.
Okay, so now we're clear on that. So the public knows, we all know, what you just said, you adopted at the city council.
Right.
Okay. Which should have been brought to this committee before, but that's okay. Any other comments on that?
The only comment I have is where Dean was saying maybe we'll do the vote in April. Are we going to have a quorum in April? Because I'm not going to be here, how many other people aren't going to be here?
I'm not going to be here.
I'm not going to be here.
There's three people right there.
Maybe we do it for May.
We are actively seeking new members. We have a potential applicant in the audience tonight, we've talked with other potential applicants. So by April, that will be cutting it close, but we may have, we will also have at least one other meeting.
There's no harm in continuing it to April, if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a quorum.
Right.
That's my only comment.
Understood.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any input from the public? Anybody want to give us some comments of what the master plan indicates and what you feel as well? It should indicate. Yes? Come forward.
Dorothy Duffy, Whipple Avenue.
Would you pull that closer to you? Yes, thank you.
You should pull yours closer, I had a lot of trouble hearing you, I'm hearing you, so Dorothy Duffy, Whipple Avenue. There's a lot on here. First off, I'm just a citizen tonight. You're volunteers, we have a lot of volunteers in Laconia doing a lot of work for the city. I'm one of them. I invite other people to be one of them, you're doing your job. Been following the master plan, I like a lot about this. I like a lot about this. There are some things, being the age that I am, that I wish would stay, but being realistic, they aren't. There's really quite a bit I want to talk about. First of all, I would like to have seen some kind of graph about how many multi-dwelling units we have in Laconia. I think a lot of us in the public are seeing a lot more being built, and there can be a saturation point. And with the county seatware draw for a lot. I also would like to know how many nonprofits. Because I'm kinda nervous, I got a little dry. Cities can get bankrupt if they don't have the tax revenue. And then you offer things like tax base and tax incentives, and that's fine too. But the burden goes on to the homeowner eventually, and that's not so great. Particularly when your income is frozen, particularly when you have to spend $500 a year to have snow removal. So I think those things should be part of what you're looking at. We have a new state law that allows accessory apartments. I've been very involved in accessory apartments, I know the good, and I know the bad about them. That too adds to the fact of multi-dwelling units. And it also adds to the lack of tax revenue. If you have two families in the house, rather than one family, you get two families using all of the services. So I have quite a bit of knowledge about that. The population when I graduated in 1950 was around 15,000. Today it's 16,000. So it's not a population growth issue. But we always talk about economy growth. And are we expecting too much for economic growth when we don't have the population growth? So I'm wondering, when do you reach a level where you're satisfied with what you have? Do you have to have more? Do you have to have more records? Do you have to have more jobs? Have to have more homes? If the demand isn't there, do you have to supply it? I drove down Main Street a couple of weeks ago, and it was black and dark for me. The stores were closed, vacant. There were potholes. It was desolate. It reminded me of It's a Wonderful Life. And then I'm reading tonight in the paper about Plank Kino, and it's so successful that more are gonna do it. And I thought, my God, that just adds to it too. Those are things that I'm not too happy to see. I wanted to make a left-hand turn like I always do at the end of Main Street, to go onto Church Street, to turn onto Pleasant Street. Lots of times, I can't get in the left lane to make that turn. I'm in no hurry. I'm not gonna squawk and complain about it. And I don't think we need to squawk and complain about it as much as we do in some of the other areas, like Lakeport, O'Wears. We have these problems. We don't have them every day, we don't have them every hour. We have them during commuter time, we have them during tourist time. What the hell? You're gonna get someplace one minute earlier? I don't think that's a major problem. So I don't think you need to do dramatic changes. You wanna do a change, do a small one that doesn't hurt the people that live there. They're there full-time. They're the ones that are here supporting the city. So consider your decisions, and do you wanna please your citizens? Or do you wanna please the people that came here 10 years ago? Or do you wanna please the people that are driving through? I'll choose the citizens. Lakeport has T-shirts that they wear that says, "Between Laconia and Wears." And physically, that's what they are. But they have a little mental addition to that. They have felt slighted many, many times. Wears has felt slighted at times. I don't want to see Lakeport wiped off the map. I happen to like an awful lot of the changes in Lakeport. I grew up in Lakeport. A lot of the changes have been just wonderful. The bridge, the reuse of property, we got some fine restaurants, we saved a few of our lovely historic buildings. A lot of it is growth too fast or growth too much. The marinas are fine, but I think you have too much saturated in one place. If you took an aerial view of it, you would see what I was talking about. It's a very small body of water, it's an awful lot of boats. My concern here tonight basically is what I read and what I know that has been proposed about Lakeport traffic. And Wanda Tibbetts is just a ghost now. She's gone. She's the queen of Lakeport. Wanda Tibbetts fought and fought and fought for Lakeport. She fought for the parking spaces. She fought for the library. She fought for Mon Beach. She fought for Torrey Park. She fought for the Fay Building. Just a very simple little woman with a loud voice that was beloved by people in Lakeport, and she did an awful lot of good. I don't wanna see what she did undone. When you changed Lakeport, lots of spaces were lost. I believe 12 on Elm Street. There were some, I believe, on Union Avenue. I forget how many. I know the problem there, because I go through there too. But I don't think the problem there is to take away buildings like the Opera House, or to take away Torrey Park, or to make it a speedway through so you don't have to look at Lakeport and pretend it's not there. I think that's extreme. And if you have to do anything, think about what you're doing and how it affects the people that lived there in the past, and people that are gonna live there in the future, and what you're gonna do to Lakeport. If Lakeport's stores are empty now, they may not be empty tomorrow. I hope Laconia's stores are not empty tomorrow. So consider that. You have lost some opportunities. The post office is on leased property that belongs to Vitello's. Vitello's is a wonderful place, I love that place. If they had their own property for parking, they wouldn't have to worry about parking. If the post office had moved to the fire station, I think that wouldn't have been a nice situation. The fire station has been sold, and I worry about that strip of land that runs parallel with Union Avenue, where there was supposed to be 10 parking spaces for Lakeport people. They couldn't have accessed that. Boats were there all the time. They weren't supposed to cross the tracks. I don't know who's gonna get those 10 spaces. I don't know what's gonna happen to that embankment when it starts to collapse and falls down into that property either. And that's something that was brought up years ago, and you're bringing it up again today. Somewhere along the line, you're gonna consider saving that property, because you're gonna have to expand that section at some time. I don't know how it's gonna take all that repeated traffic without erosion. I feel sorry that we are endowed with three beautiful lakes, beautiful mountains, wonderful, wonderful gardens all year round, pumpkin fest, bike week, multicultural, coffee festivals. I could go on and on. Fishing jerseys, ice boat racing. We got that all. Why can't we do better? Why are we doing so poorly? I don't understand that. Something's wrong. We have a TIF district. We have one in Wears, we have one in Lakeport, we have one in Laconia. Lakeport doesn't have any people, and it's a former prison. I don't think it was laid out properly, because you have to have people that either own business or live in these districts. Well, apparently, there's nobody there that kind of fits that position, so they don't really have representation again. I don't know what you can do about that, but that's kind of a pity. I go online and talking about Lakeport Square and the traffic, and I know it well, I know every lane, I know which ways to go, I know it did help when you changed the lights. If you look at aerial views, or virtual tours, or panning, you get the true picture. If you just look at the flat map, or you see a lot of arrows, it gets very confusing. But if you're in your car and driving, you understand that's what you did. You got in your car and you drove, and you checked it out, and you tested it, and you did the traffic count. We oughta look a little bit clearer before we make a decision about something. I'm gonna end this very quickly, you're very patient with me. I thought there was something else here that I wanted to talk about. I think I hit bottom. Thank you.
Dorothy. Understand the concept. This is to look at the entire city and how we could do a lot of these things, how we could generate a better tax base, how we can get the population to grow. This is all part of the concept, kind of thought. And as you said...
I know that, yes. I've actually worked on the master plan twice.
Right, so what will happen is eventually, okay? And one of the things that was discussed was the parking down in Lakeport, for example, and many other areas, zoning for a lot of these areas. And with the advent, with the hope, that a lot of this here would change the dynamics of the city, make it, put it in a more positive way, and a growth rate. Now, all that takes time, and this is only the opening sequence of many things that we have to do. But your input on, you know, traffic and all that would be in a more specific time, at a specific area at that time. So just want you to have an input on that at that time.
I know things get done and they get shelved too. But sometimes, when you go back and look...
Dorothy.
You're surprised that you have actually done a whole bunch of the things you didn't know you did. I wanted...
No, I want you to listen to me. Listen to me for two minutes.
That's hard to do.
If you're concerned, it'll be less than two minutes. If you're concerned about the situation in Lakeport and the proposed changes, the elimination of some parking places, spaces, that's gonna come before the council again on the first meet, the second Tuesday of April. So if you wanna express your concerns about that, that's the place and time to go. And that's all I wanted to give you for information.
I really was very confused about that. I was surprised to see that the public hearing on the planning board...
This is not a hearing about Lakeport.
No, 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 no. A public hearing period on the master plan. And Lakeport was a part of it, so I was confused.
I hear you clearly, you covered a lot, but a lot of it is part of the master plan, is not part of the master plan, a lot of it, the economic...
Yes.
Many of that has to be done.
Yes. And I think I addressed quite a few things on the master plan that you were concerned with.
That validates a lot of the discussions we had. Parking down in Lakeport.
Parking and land use, yes.
So I'm glad you brought it forward. And again, your voice can be heard again. This is not the first and only time that it will be allowed to be heard. But it will be heard again.
Before I forget, because I do forget very quickly, the other thing I was trying to remember was, if you're looking for an additional parking place, the Five and Dime store's been vacant for a long time. I doubt that it holds an awful lot of parking spaces. But if any building goes, needs to come down, I would say it should be that one, and could be that one. And there is parking behind, there is the little, somebody talked about a little alleyway there.
It's point of order. Come to the council, come to the council meeting and talk to us about that.
It's a point of order. This is a public hearing, the lady's giving her...
My point?
It's too bad.
I'm just raising the...
Will you just have some patience and let the lady speak?
I have patience.
Yeah, I know David has patience, and I know I'm speaking a long time.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna give public input on the master plan? We'll close the public hearing, and this goes forward to the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
You wanna refer to, just refer to the next meeting for a vote, please?
Yes, so you have to have a vote to continue it, yeah.
We don't need a motion for that, do we?
Yes.
Please, so I move that.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, okay. All right, next thing on the agenda is Holy Trinity. This has been accepted. A open hearing at 7:38. And can the applicant speak, please, on his proposal?
Are you seeing it? I'm sorry. Okay. Good evening, thank you for hearing us. My name is Fred Matuszuski, I'm with CMK Architects.
I can hear too well, can you speak?
I'm sorry?
Yes. Thank you.
Like a rock star. Fred Matuszuski is my name, I'm with CMK Architects. I am the agent for the Diocese of Manchester, Roman Catholic bishop of Manchester. He's the owner of the property at 291 Union. And I also have with me Father Mark Druin, who is the pastor of the parish, and Robert Ibe, director of real estate, if you have any additional questions. The director of real estate for the diocese. Subject property is bound by Union Ave and Guilford Ave. It's a little under seven acres. And what we're looking at doing is converting the existing Sacred Heart convent into an elementary school for Holy Trinity. Holy Trinity will be relocating from their Church Street location and moving to this location once the property is renovated and we provide an additional staircase and elevator vertical access. I think everyone here has seen the Sacred Heart convent. It has certainly been around for quite a while. The proposed entrance to the facility will be front and center to the slide that you're looking at, a ramped access. And the property or the subject parcel, the subject structure, is the darkest one in the center of the slide that you see right there, immediately behind the church, and access off of both Guilford as well as Union Ave. What we plan to do, and have applied for, is to the zoning board of adjustment, it's for a special exception to have a elementary school in a commercial zone. And that was approved on the condition of your approval this evening for the rest of the site plan. One of our... We are asking for a conditional use permit for parking. And that is for shared parking, because we have a parcel here that has both the church and the school, and church offices on the property. If we add up the required parking spaces for the three functions, we are required to have 275 spaces. Presently, 150 exist with 18 accessible spaces. What we are proposing is for 147 spaces with 20 accessible spaces. But again, the parking will be shared because of the use of the facilities, the school principally being used from the hours from 7:00 in the morning until 9:00. until 3:00 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. The church being used for principally from Saturday evening through Sunday morning.
Excuse me, those overlapping numbers overlap with the church services? Parking required for that also? Those overlapping numbers? The numbers for parking for the church and the numbers for parking required for the school and all that? Are they overlapping or are they separate numbers?
They are overlapping.
They're overlapping, okay.
Therefore, the shared parking. The work that will take place at the convent includes the conversion of some spaces to create 10 classrooms. So we based our parking requirements on those 10 classrooms. Presently, there are 78 students at Holy Trinity. We expect a population of about 100 students at the relocated school. I think we may be able to cap out at 135, but you know, that will be at some point in the future.
And what would be the limiting factor on that? Classroom size, teachers?
It's based upon the numbers of classrooms.
Okay, not parking.
Right. So that pretty well sums up, I guess, our presentation as such. And you certainly willing to take questions?
Anybody have a question?
Yes, the timing of the school, what are the, what are the time that they would be out?
Three in the afternoon. They have, they do have an after-school program that runs until 5:00, but those are for a handful of students. And in the morning, they accept as early as, I guess, 7:00 in the morning.
I'm concerned about, because there's a lot of traffic coming out of Dewey Street.
Right, so.
From the high school, a lot.
We were asked to perform a traffic study. And we did that and reviewed that with Krista Larson and came through it. So she had no issues, had no issues with what we had reported. So that study was conducted over a couple of days.
So children will be dropped off at 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, picked up by bus? How's that going to work?
Well, the drop-off period obviously has staggered. Some kids will be dropped off a little bit earlier than others.
What would be that time, roughly that time range?
Yes.
What would that be, from what time to what time do children be dropped off?
7:00 to 8:30.
7:00 to 8:30, okay. And it doesn't mean they're all being dropped off at the same classes. There's going to be so many and so many and so many, I got it.
Exactly.
But it is going to coincide with high schools, the start of high school and the end of the high school day. So that will create some additional congestion, right?
With the relocation here, yes, but we're not talking about sizable numbers. I think right now, as, there was an informal study done over at Church Street and we're only talking about 30 cars, I guess, at most. There's a fair amount of carpooling and there's, you know, there's really not a backup presently over at the Church Street site.
Okay. How many, how many staff will be using the parking on a, for the entire day? Do you have that number, something?
About 10 to 12.
A staff of about 15.
Okay.
Again, what was, did you do a count on the Guilford Ave-Dewey Street?
We did a count on the Guilford Ave intersection with the driveway, yes.
And what was that, those numbers?
I don't recall offhand.
It's just a lot of people are driving. You have the driving, that they're exiting on Guilford Ave and it's a one-way coming in from Union. But I'm just really, really concerned because we're talking teenage drivers coming out of Dewey Street.
But you're regional, right? The people that are coming to that school are not just Laconia, they're regional students, the area students?
Yes.
Okay.
We included in our application a quarter of an inch-thick traffic study. Was that not distributed to you or?
So in essence, some of you, if not all of them, or most of them, whatever, would be going the other way maybe to the connector as opposed to going on Union Ave.
Exactly.
So there's no, nothing saying that those numbers are definitely related to Union Ave or going to Union Ave, okay.
Right. Our onsite traffic circulation would be calling for exiting onto Guilford.
Right.
And not onto Union.
Likely they would take a right out of that park, I would think. They're coming around the other way, they're not going to get on Union Ave. Well, that's just what I would think. I mean, I don't know, if I exit that park a lot, I would go right and then go right and go right up down by there.
Well, the people coming out of Dewey usually go left and right. They don't just go one, usually one way.
No, we're talking, just tell them what the students, we're talking students.
But when their students are going, when they're going out of the parking area.
Students here going throughout the area, not just into Laconia, different story. Excuse me, what's, what's the age of the students going to this school?
Pre-K through 8.
Okay, no drivers.
But we have called for an onsite traffic circulation that everyone exits off of Guilford so that we don't create a bottleneck at Union. They can come onsite from Union. They could come down from Lakeport and get onto Guilford and then turn into the site from Guilford.
Like I said, it looks good to me going in and out of Union and Guilford for your parents with their students. I just don't know what's going to happen at Dewey. That would be my major concern.
When this, the public hearing is supposed to, we'll ask about the traffic study and what you guys think of it.
Can ask us now if you want.
Yeah.
DPW did review the initial submission and they asked for a more detailed traffic study. And the applicant looked at the traffic at the current school site, the counts. And they provided that information and the, I think the more likely, like which way they're going to go out onto Guilford Ave, right?
Exactly.
And Krista said she was comfortable that it was, it was, it was not an impactful number, so.
Yeah, I think you could use your judgment on that quite clear. I know he's got.
Well, if you folks.
He's got some data that validates that, but I think you could use your judgment and then you would understand that's would be the normal behavior of people. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
If you folks are comfortable with that.
I, I think more importantly, DPW is comfortable with it. They're, they're more the traffic experts than we are, yes.
Yes.
Okay, anything else you want to bring forward?
No, I'll take any questions that you have or.
Any other questions? Okay, that being said, do you have any public input on this at all? Any for, any against? Okay. Okay, I'll close the hearing at 7:50. Any input from staff at all?
Um.
You already gave some, but that's.
Yeah, so this project went through two TRCs as is typical of a project like this. They did receive their special exception from the zoning board for the use of a school. The, in addition to that, they will require the site plan approval, the conditional use permit for that parking arrangement, and they're requesting a waiver for the reduction of the impact fees, that 80% reduction. We support approval of all of these. The parking situation just makes sense. You've got a church that's used mostly on the weekends, a school that's, you know, used Monday through Friday. There's no sense to make them provide, you know, much more, you know, impervious surface and you get into run, you know, we're always trying to shrink that as much as we can. So we would support and recommend approval of all three of their requests. There are a couple of planner revisions, they're minor, they're listed in the staff review. Project completion deadlines are standard. So there's really nothing, nothing popping out on this one. It's a, it's a good, clean project.
Thank you. Okay, I guess what's the will of the board? We're on the public hearing, we hear the planning board's, planning department's input.
I guess I want to raise an issue.
What's that?
I guess I want to raise an issue.
What's the issue?
The issue is the impact fees.
Mm-hmm.
It's not that I'm against it, I just want some uniformity in it. I'm not sure of what the basis is for an 80% reduction in the impact fees. I want applicants treated fairly. I'm not sure that we grant reductions on impact fees on a regular basis. And I'm not sure that we grant them at the level of 80%.
All right, it's a point of order. I don't think this is the time to bring it up because this was brought up before and then you tabled it. You wanted a table to talk about impact fees in the future. So let's not go back and try to correct everything right now. Let's take it for what it is.
That's not accurate, no. I know, I'm bringing this up now.
Are you asking about the criteria for waiving the impact fee?
Yeah, yeah.
And that amount? So.
It's an adjustment.
So in these zoning ordinance, in the impact, in the impact fee section, you can see 235-28.2 waivers under Section C, which is what this waiver would be granted under if the board moves forward. This would be, the planning board may waive up to 80% of the impact fees for a property assessed with an impact fee if after review of the project proposal, the planning board decides that the project is 100% infill, rehab and reuse. And in the definition for infill, rehab and reuse means any vacant building on a lot or parcel within particular zoning districts which just falls under, where at least 80% of the land within a 300-foot radius of the site has been developed and where water, sewer, streets, schools and fire protection are already provided and the property has been remodeled interior and exterior other than ordinary repair and used for constructive activity. So our.
You think that fits that, that criteria?
We do, yep.
And you think that that criteria has been applied evenly with other applicants?
Let's look at incident, let's talk about the council.
No, I'm going to ask the question. I'm not out of order, I'm asking the question, no I'm not.
You are, you are.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not.
Let's talk about this applicant and we'll talk about this at the end of this meeting.
It is about this application.
This application meets the requirement, is that correct?
We believe that it meets the requirement.
It meets the requirement. You have a question, you have a problem with that?
I have a question about that.
Answer it, you have a problem in meeting the requirement.
I have a question about that, girl.
We question everything and we have to educate you every day. You have a problem with that?
I don't know what your problem is tonight, girl.
What's your problem?
I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with this applicant, do you?
I'm just.
Do you?
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Yes, I have a problem.
All right, gentlemen, please.
Thank you.
The question I think that, that David is asking is whether we have looked at the criteria for the request for the waiver reduction and whether we feel it meets the criteria and the answer is yes.
Okay.
And that's a separate issue from whether we want to do impact fees or not. That's a whole separate issue.
I'm not asking to change the.
The question before the, the question, the only part of this that is discretionary for the board, which I believe is at the, the crux of, of the counselor's question is, is whether we want to do the 80% or some other number. The, the way the ordinance is read is that the board can grant up to 80% and they have asked for 80%.
And all I'm concerned is that we treat all the applicant, all the applicants evenly. And if you're telling me that we do that, I'm, I'm more than happy to go along with the 80%. That's my concern. Two, does it fit the, one, does it fit the criteria? And two, are we doing the same thing for other applicants? Are we treating?
Are we submitting each applicant to this standard? Yes, we are.
So for.
Okay, that's what we're doing.
So just off the top of my head, I can give you some examples of other waivers that the board has granted, granted in the recent past.
Okay.
And they've always been the full 80%. The Beacon Street West apartments.
Yeah.
I believe the 126 Union Ave across the river here.
Okay.
Um, Main Street, which one? Oh, the Colonial?
Okay, let's get off of this right now because.
But, but basically, yeah, the board is, the board has not, as a practice, reduced that to less than 80%. They've just standardly given the 80. They do have the right to reduce it, but in practice, it's been the 80 for as, as long as I can recall.
Right.
Okay.
So this is. That answered my question. It's even-handed, okay? So we're clear on that. But I also suggest some of the board members to go back and read this stuff. If you, if you want to be understanding of it, you sit in a lot of these committees, you asked to look at this, you tabled it, you tabled it last year and now you're asking the same questions again. I would advise council that you go back into read this and then if you have something to bring up at the end of one of these meetings, we can conduct business at that point on.
Thank you for your wise advice.
I think I am giving you good advice. Okay. So we have a motion on this application and to.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
The, the other building in the parish hall?
Yes.
Not school, is it? There's no schooling in there, is there?
There's no schooling in there.
So there's no impact of the, of the parking from the parish hall?
No.
You find what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application PL 2018-0002SP, 2018-003CUP, which are both the parking and the reduction of the impact fees in regards to the project completion deadlines. Plan revision, April 3rd, 2018. Mylar, May 1st, 2018. Completion, March 5th, 2019. Plan revisions, number two, A through D. Three, conditions that must be met prior to final approval or recording of Mylar, A through C. Four, conditions to be completed prior to the start of the site work, A. Five, conditions applicable during and after constructions, A through G. And six, as-built plans.
You have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, you have to put through our dynamics here.
Thank you.
Don't we have to do the CUP separately? We don't.
I think it would be cleaner if you took a separate vote on that, yeah.
Okay, you have a motion on the CUP?
Okay.
On the, on the fee waiver, you're.
Yeah.
You going to make a motion on that, David?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the CUP, CUP request for alternative parking requirements per 245-35D2.
Is that it?
That's it.
I second it.
Second on, on favor? All right, you're good to go. Any new business?
You have a plan you need to accept.
No, that's a mistake, sorry.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I just asked about that, I went, oh my God, I didn't see that.
Okay, never mind, yes, new business. No, no new business.
I don't know, any old business?
Nope.
I have old business, as we were talking tonight. We had come out with, or had been discussed to go over exactly what David was talking about. And it was tabled because you'd want to go into it at that point.
There are two different issues, just so you understand that.
I'm saying, I'm saying we, we look at the whole thing again. There's no reason to table it. We should move forward and, and look at that, what we decided to do before. And if there's a problem with it and how it's being worked and how it's being understood and how it's being applied, then we should talk about it.
I agree.
We don't do it at the moment that the person's here.
That was not what I was talking about.
Well, that's what I thought.
If you don't understand what I was talking about, that's okay. I'm perfectly agreeable to moving forward with the impact.
So I suggest.
I moved to table it because I didn't have enough information about how we were going to consider it. So.
Okay.
It's two different issues.
Well, the issue I have is that we should understand it before we take exception to something that we're known to have a knowledge of. So let's have a knowledge of it and then take exception to it. I have no problem with that at all. But let's all start from the same starting point. And if you can't start at that point, then we have to understand what is being recommended to us. Any latest on reports? The Lake Region Planning Commission?
Nope, no updates.
Nothing going on over there?
It's been quiet over the winter.
It's been quiet, there's been no charrettes or anything else that they do over there, nothing? Okay. Conservation, misconservation, Brandy, anything?
Um, nope.
Nothing.
It's winter.
Oh, I didn't ask.
Okay.
And city council? Nope, nothing, okay. Any other business?
I just have a question to ask for, for the board here. So at the, the first application, I think it was the first application, I, so. Second application, sorry, the second application, I, for Watercraft. So the, the discussion centered around extensions and, and the number of extensions that the board wants to grant. and, and the number of extensions that the board wants to grant. So, um, I, I think, I think we need to have a discussion about that, and the board should craft a, a policy about that and take a vote on that policy. And I don't know how you wanna go about doing that. I mean, I, I'm perfectly willing to canvass the individual members to see what the feeling is of...
Please do that, and then I will meet with you because this goes back a lot of years.
Okay.
I mean, we're seeing people twelve years into the process, thirteen years into the process.
Understood.
And we feel very sympathetic to their needs and, and their requirements, and obviously the economic environment over the years. But at some point in time, we just gotta say to ourselves, you know, let's move forward. Let's peg it and move forward. And especially right now, there's not that much going on with changes. So I know we're talking about Watermark and having maybe them do the re... They don't have to really do re-engineering. We could submit their engineering almost by and large the way it is. But that being said, okay, there's a lot of that, we should understand why something's going on and why somebody hasn't moved forward on these issues. I mean, we have someone, I can, I can just see the guy coming in now, again, and he'll be in again, and, and that's, and then we give him two years' extension, you know? So we're really taking a big bite out of what we're doing here, and now we're into, in some cases, thirteen, fourteen years. And, and it doesn't, it's, it doesn't seem to be, have enough validity in what we wanna do. And when we say this, time's up, time's up. But we don't seem to have the ability to do that, and I understand why we have. Don't misunderstand me. I truly understand and sympathetic to the needs of the applicant who has an economic problem and they're not moving forward with it. But again, we were just told tonight, doesn't know what he's gonna do, he does have an economic problem, but yet he'll do certain things and other things. Now, I went along with this, but I wanted to make a point of it because we have to do something in other areas. We have to do something. And here was the starting point.
And I think in coordination with that, things have changed. In a ten-year period of time, someone, you know, a neighbor and a butter, all, even the instance of having the roundabout. And I don't think those are, are in, if they, you know what I'm saying? It's like, okay, we approved this, and if we keep extending, too much has changed in that area to warrant a extension, extension, extension.
And I'm not disagreeing, and, and I, I certainly welcome to have a policy, but I, I, I know we have very briefly at times discussed whether we want to rein in extensions or not, but we have not set a policy and, and...
Well...
It, it would be best, I believe, for all around if, if when an application, an applicant comes in to the office to file out the form for the extension, that we could tell them at that point in time, the board has a policy that you're only gonna get five, you're only gonna get six, or whatever it is, instead of...
But in essence, we have violated our own guidance. Our own guidance was that we would extend for a year, and then they would have to come in for another extension. At that point in time, reviews would take place and changes would take place if need be, and then we would extend it if there was none required. I've seen that none of these seem to be relevant. We don't have anything coming in that says, hey, we need a change here. None of that's occurred over ten years or so. So we've been pushing our, our own issues forward and forward every, every, every extension. Now, we went in some cases from one-year extension to two-year extension. I don't know if that's a matter of policy, it's a matter of what we do. So it doesn't mean we have to have a policy to say we're only gonna do this at any given time. My take on that would be, at certain times, we just gotta say this is a little bit too far. And that's subjective, but the fact is they're all past that one year anyway. So at that point, we have some kind of discretion as far as the board is concerned, on how often we're getting feedback from people, how often they're coming in, and how many extensions they actually have.
Well, I think, I think that when you talk about extensions, having a policy is okay, but I think we gotta understand that it's gotta be fluid, that there's got to be exceptions to it based upon the circumstances that the applicant finds himself in, or herself in, or itself in. That, um, a policy is not a bad thing, so that people will get an idea of what timeframes we're looking at towards the completion of a project. But it can't be set in stone. There's gotta be criteria or a consideration, considerations for, for an extension beyond the, beyond the period based upon the circumstances of the, of the, of the applicant, you know?
The, the final...
Hey, we agree on something, somewhat, okay.
The final decision on...
We agree?
A final decision...
You're getting there, you're getting there, man.
Final extent, final decision on extension will always be the board's decision, but I think in all fairness to everyone that it would be best if staff at first advises the applicant that, you know, you're running up against, you know, you've done this six, seven times and, and the board is getting, running out of patience, and, you know, you can go and ask for it, and if you got a good reason...
I think you could say that any day of the week right now.
Right, and you, if you come in with a very good reason, then that's one thing. Now, I know, I mean, and, and my understanding is, I don't know because I haven't been here, but my understanding is that obviously, a lot of these projects that we are granting extensions to, not all of them, but a lot of them were approved before the recession, and we got in the habit of, of doing the extensions because of the economy and, and, and...
And that's a valid reason for, for an extension.
And those were valid reasons, and every, every municipality in the state did the same thing for several years. But, I mean, we must, I think we, I think we all recognize the recession has been over for a few years now at least, no matter how you wanna define it, and, and the, the, the rationale behind the extensions of, well, the economy was bad, so therefore we couldn't build, it's probably not a legitimate reason.
It's clearly understood if someone has a reason that's out of their control, that they're looking for approval from the state or something that they're doing, or, you know, DOT, or anything else like that, that is out of their hands. I mean, they, they take something, they put it in their docket, and they don't respond till forty days later, thereabouts, you know? And if they gotta look into it, that's another forty days. So what, I understand that. And, and those type of extensions are valid. I mean, those are true valid ones, and there's something that I don't think that we should, you know, slow that process down or prevent those people. It's out of their hands, it's out of their control. But there are other things that we've been hearing. I mean, we got people have didn't develop things, and now they're, you know, it's, you know, fisher cut bait, and they, and now they're on their twelfth extension. But it's already been developed. You know what I mean? Is we're being...
Or half-developed. I, I understand, understood.
I think you get it.
One question, please.
Yes.
I don't understand exactly, like, say, we, say if we disapprove Watermark's extension tonight, and two years from now, they wanna go ahead and do it, what do they have to all do start over? I, you know, what's the...
They, they would have to file a new application.
What's the, what's the big deal in that?
It really...
There is an expense to that.
My, my, my take...
They have an expense for an, uh, extension too, don't they?
No.
It's twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
I see.
Or fifty dollars.
I mean, in many cases, in many cases, that design that they have is still a valid design.
Right. I mean, say, three years from now, they wanna go ahead and do it.
So they don't have to really do any real engineering, they just have to resubmit, and that, what that does is it puts it on a docket for another review. And if in fact there's been changes or setback, whatever it may be, they might have to move this a little bit here. But that's usually not the case. That's usually an exception, truly an exception. So that's what that's all about, so you understand. It's just about refiling something, and then it goes back and gets back in, in the network.
It's really a costly thing.
How, how expensive is it to resubmit?
Well, it depends on the project, but I mean...
I understand it's four hundred thousand dollar building.
In this case, tonight, I mean, it could be several thousand dollars in engineering fees and lawyer's fees.
They have to re-engineer the plans, they have to have...
Not necessarily, but somebody's gotta review and make sure that, and there's application fees, and I mean, I mean...
But he doesn't pay those thousands of dollars.
Well, I, I'm just saying that...
The point is, he doesn't pay those thousands of dollars.
Depends on the...
Okay.
Depends on the application is what, what it would, gonna cost them to refile.
They paid the application fee, and then we look at what goes on.
Well, I mean, they may have to have an engineer relook at the plans themselves.
They might have to, they might have to. And if it's the same engineer that they had before, the guy's just gonna look at it and give it a rubber stamp and say, it looks the same to me. Nothing's changed, there's nothing relevant here to, that you should be concerned about. Or if there is, he makes note of it, and then the, the planning department hears that, and they make a note of it, and they change whatever they have to change. But a lot of that is not engineering stuff. Believe me, I've gone to it two or three times. It's not rocket science. And it's not that costly.
And don't, don't misunderstand, I, I, I'm not, not against tightening up the policy on extensions at all. Very much, very, very much in favor of that. Okay. So, but my only concern is, is the, the discussion and the intensity of the discussion about it and the finality of the, of the discussion caught me a little bit by surprise. That's, that's my only concern.
Okay. And I was trying to separate it so we could get one thing going at a separate timeline than the other thing. Yeah, you wanna say, David?
Yeah, so if they get the extension, and I'm a little bit in his, what he's looking at also, if they get the extension...
If they get it.
Yeah, they get, we give them the extension for a whole year.
Right.
If things change, does he still have to go back to the...
No.
Or is he grandfathered?
He's grandfathered because he has that extension.
Okay, that's, that's where he saves the money. If things change, ordinance-wise and other things, he's grandfathered, no matter what we do. We can, we have to allow him to do that.
Exactly. So sometimes what happens is...
That's what I think he's getting at, that where's the cost?
But if in fact his extension was not granted, his cost would be to resubmit his application. And would there be a cost associated with that? At least his application fee, but maybe nothing more than that. Who knows, right? So that's the point, that, that's the, you know, the part that you wanna be considered about.
Right.
But it's not really that paramount, it's not that much of an impact on the developer, especially if he's got like four or five years of extensions.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's gotta be, you know, sooner or later, we gotta fisher cut bait. I mean, it becomes a joke. It becomes a joke. Why even waste that time having people come in for an extension?
And I wasn't, when I talked to the Watermark gentleman there, again, I said I don't see him as a problem asking for the extension because he hasn't asked six or seven times.
Been six years old.
We've had a lot of people ask that long.
Twelve times, four, I mean, we've got people going on for twelve, fourteen years, I think. I don't know how many years they're going on now. So I think we gotta sort of, you know, understand why we're doing what we're doing, and we have gone through a phase of the economy. We've been very compassionate with that, if not compassionate, understanding what the world's about. And that's what we have to do to make sure people survive in our environment, the city environment, and we've done that. But now it comes to a point in time that, that, that is different, but the entire, the environment is different right now. And it's, in this particular case, I was separating what was going on, on this applicant, so we could see that's one condition and that's another condition. If someone says, you know, I can't finish my, my whatever, because, something minor because of income or financially it's not right, then it tells you the big enchilada's not gonna happen, not gonna happen. You know what I mean? So we have to understand that, and why we keep it going, I don't know. Now, I don't, I understand people have economic problems, and that's true. And that should be considered. But at some point in time, we gotta say, I don't get this. And there's certain applicants I just don't get. I mean, they've been saying this for twelve years and something like that. Twelve years, things have changed.
Well, there's no harm in developing a policy as long as we keep it flexible and have criteria to deal with it.
All right, so that being said, anything else that we wanna talk about? And nothing other business? So entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a birthday here, and we wanna make sure the birthday girl gets out at eight sixteen, if possible.
Second. That's her present.
To you. You have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
All in favor?
I second.
Second and all in favor. I jumped the gun, I wanna get out of here.
I don't blame you.
All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you for your patience tonight.
We'll see you in the spring.
I'll see you in the spring.